Hey Tom, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Divers is on, before I call this meeting to order, and Mr. Divers asked me to run the agenda as he's on Zoom. Okay, so with that, we do the pledge. John, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Tom, will you do the agenda? Roll call, please.
Yes. John Boyle.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Town manager, I am Tom, Town Manager Tom Hutcheson, I am here. Chair Joe Diver.
Here.
Here on Zoom. And Dan Esco and Mark Strohler are excused.
Okay, thank you. This is time for the public to address the board. Okay, this is time when the public may address the board on any item or listed on the agenda meeting or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or the designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful to others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We're meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. All right, so anybody who wants to speak on anything that's here tonight? Okay. All right, we go to number five. Accept a police department grant project for $1,300. Mr. Boyle.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, the town has already accepted the police department grant from Med Project for $1,300.
Okay, is there a second on this?
Uh, second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, Tom, the next one's assigned to annual meeting warrant. After review of the draft motions and document.
Yes, and I have some unfortunate news, and that is there is a, there was a wrong legal citation in the opioid settlement fund article, Article 15. It cites a general law for stabilization, and it should be citing a general law for special revenue funds under Article 15. The first line says pursuant to provision of general law, Chapter 40, Section 5D. It should be Chapter 53, Section 4. So I am very sorry that, it would be great if you could approve the warrant with that change, and then we can get it printed up and if you can come in and sign it, that would be great.
Okay.
That said, unfortunately, we don't have a copy here suitable for signing.
Okay.
So you want us to, you want to go through this first? Or you want anything else before we vote to?
Accept it.
Yeah, accept it.
For just another change since the last time that we went over, that we went through it, Article 17 has, I'm sorry, Article 19 has been rearranged. It now separates the money items for fiscal year 2025 and for fiscal year 2024. Often, we do not have items for 2024 on the town meeting budget, but there are several items that should be paid in a timely way and not wait until July 1st. These include the easements, reimbursement for the deposit on the real estate purchase, and providing funding for a grant application for rebuilding Walker Rock culverts. If we could get a start on that before July 1st, that would be great. So those are the items for fiscal year 24. Everything else is for fiscal year 25. So those are the, and I, and I, I'm not sure whether last time, I know it went out over email, but there were a couple of articles on the easements that had been placed after the funding article. And reviewing it with town council, we agreed that the authorizations for funding should come before the funding article. So that's Article 17 and 18 now come before Article 19. Prior to this, they came, they were Articles 20 and 21, or, sorry, they, they came after the money article. So those are the changes since the last time you reviewed it.
All right. Is the appropriate time to ask questions?
Sure.
Okay, Article 17. I know there's three different, I don't know how to type these in front of me, three different articles or issued items that reflect and money to be spent on the transfer station.
Oh, so this is Article 19? You should have this revised. This is the current one. And that should have been put in your folder inside.
Yeah, well, is, oh, it's now is 19?
Yes.
Oh, great, 19, the updated version. There's three items in, for the Department of Public Works. Engineering for the transfer station, transfer station purchase, recyclable containers, transfer station prefabricated wood swap wood shed. Now, I think all these three of these things add up to approximately, give or take a few bucks, $100,000. Is that money going to be reflected in the sticker price over there for people that purchase stickers and bags? Or is the taxpayer's going to absorb this amount and in fact subsidize the people that use the transfer station as opposed to having their trash picked up and recyclable on the curb?
Well, this is slated to come from free cash, which ultimately does come from the taxpayer. We do hope that we can increase recycling rates at the transfer station, but we do need to help this transfer station become more fully operational.
Yeah, with my understanding, when we took over this function, the transfer station, and I spoke about it many times, all costs connected with it are supposed to be accrued to the stickers, the sticker price. But now that's not the case. And in fact, as I said, the taxpayers are going to be subsidizing the sticker buyers at the cost of the people that have their trash picked up the curbside.
Well, the town always subsidizes the transfer station to some degree. We subsidize the hazardous waste pickup, and we would have difficulty in raising the amount of money we're talking about within a fiscal year, which is, and we couldn't spend that money on, on these things anyway. It would still have to be voted for by town meeting because the money that we raise through the stickers goes to the general fund. It doesn't go back to the transfer station.
Just wanted to really kind of, in my credence saying that people are eligible to use the transfer station without a cost if they're just bringing recyclables?
There is a reduced cost, reduced for junk, for recycling only stickers. I believe it's about half the price.
$60.
50?
60.
67?
All right, thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, you all set, Tom?
Yeah, I guess so. One other thing here, but it's all right.
Okay, got another question?
No, it's okay.
Can I ask the chair for a question?
Sure.
My question about this is simply if we're spending, is it $60,000 on the study? Is it the consulting study $60,000 for the transfer station?
For design and a cost estimate on rebuilding the transfer station.
To assess what needs to be done and make proposals. I get that. My question, I guess, is if we're spending that money this year, wouldn't it make sense to put off any and all other expenditures until that consulting comes back and says, you should replace the wood shed, you should replace the recycling? Wouldn't it make more sense to wait to see what the consultants say?
That study is not geared towards equipment.
Oh, it's not? It's functional or?
It's redesigning the transfer station itself.
Okay. All right, that was my only question.
And it's only, yeah, it's only design. We don't know whether the town will fund it once we find out how much it will cost.
So this is about keeping it going? These other purchases are about keeping it going?
Yes.
Yes.
And enhancing its capacity.
Follow-up, excuse me. Just a follow-up. One of the things that's going to be done, projected to be done, is a new surface on the transfer station area because of the deep cracks. I know, I fell in one. But is that going to be a contentious issue, whether it's going to be blacktop or cement? No. Just wanted to ask.
Okay.
All right, thanks for your, no, you're on.
Do you want to make a motion to accept Tom's amendment?
All right, yes, Article what, Tom? 17?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
It's the opioid.
Yeah, 15.
Article. So yeah, that's Article 15.
Okay, I moved that the Article 15 and the annual town warrant be amended as the town manager and the chair indicated.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, is there any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, you need a motion to accept the warrant.
Move that we accept the warrant as presented and amended to forward to the annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, you'll let us know we got to get up there and sign this.
Yes. That'll be as soon as I can possibly manage that.
Okay. Is there anything else on the town meeting warrant or explanations and document, Tom?
Well, I wanted to share with you the draft motions and explanations. We don't have to go through it all now, but this is obviously where we, and in fact, it's not even, it's not even completely done because I need some, some other money figures.
Okay.
But it's almost done. The motion for Article 14 is cleaning up some prior year borrowing authorizations, and we'll be getting those figures from the town accountant. Then there are the figures related to the easements, which we do not have yet. So when we get those easement figures, we'll be able to plug them in. There's a, there's a small chance that we won't have them in time for town meeting. We could put in, and I believe we will, but we could put in, we could authorize them and then not use them, not use as much if we needed to as well. That'll depend on the finance committee and select board at that time as we go through this, this document, motions and explanations.
Well, we got the article, we got the motion, so we could plug in the amount of money at town meeting.
Yeah. And I'm hoping we have the appraisers' figures by that point.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we will for, for the Houstonian Street parcel. Not entirely sure for the Orchard Street parcel. We're also negotiating the possible donation of easements from the Orchard Street parcels.
Okay.
You still looking at the other thing in East Two to Town Street?
I believe we will have a figure for that by town meeting.
But didn't the vote, the board vote, that we were going to pursue that?
Oh, this is for the, this is a different, this is not Soro Echos.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, we had two to start, now we only have one on East Two to Town Street.
Right.
Thanks.
Quick, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask Tom if you would like me to draft an explanation for Article 1.
Uh, sure.
Okay.
And you'll get it to Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
And you get the, the size of the explanation is relatively concise.
I have these chapters from 2023, but when, when would you need it?
Anytime in the next few weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, so if you have, please do look over the motions and explanations document. If you find any errors or want to add some verbiage about any of the items, please let me know, and we will, as usual, have a call with town council moderator, someone from the select board, someone from the finance committee, town accountant himself, to go through the entire document before it gets to town meeting.
Okay. Okay, number seven, review priority capital projects and capital plans.
Uh, this had been left, we had started this last week. I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense to go through it tonight with two of the members missing.
Right.
And I would suggest that we table it.
Okay, let's put that on the next agenda, please.
Yeah, thank you.
I would feel more comfortable with everybody's input on you.
And a reminder that I will, I will not be present at the next select board meeting.
Where you going? Eclipse?
Yeah.
So am I.
Oh, really? Oh, great.
Wait. I meant to tell you that.
Yeah, I've been bringing that up for some time, so.
Okay, now, discussion on pre-town meeting on Monday, April 29th.
Yeah, we have started having these meetings for anyone who wants to come and go over the warrant before town meeting so that any questions can be answered. We can get into as much detail as people like there. A great opportunity for people to become educated about what's on the warrant and why, if, if they so choose, and that is hopefully going to make for better discussion at town meeting and a more informed discussion. So that's, that's how I see it, and.
They work well in the past.
Well, good, so I, I, I've been more or less assuming that we were going to go ahead with it, but I did want to have the opportunity to, for the board to weigh in on, you know, same time, same place, same Monday before, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it always helps, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion on digital annual reports.
Oh, we were going to take that out. Alyssa is not ready with the numbers for that. We couldn't do it this year anyway, for the, for logistical reasons. If we did not have a printed town report or had a much reduced print run for the town report, we would still have to get the warrant to everybody in town. We're not sure whether it would be worth enlisting the help of the Boy Scouts simply to take a piece of paper that could easily be mailed by itself for that. We haven't had that discussion with them, but that's one of the things that we would have to talk about. And there is, of course, a cost if we were to mail the warrants. There, there would be a cost to that. So we're trying to assemble all of the issues and have a good foundation for you to talk about that in the future, should you choose to.
Wouldn't the cost be offset by not having, I don't like to say this, paying the Boy Scouts?
Well, that's an interesting idea. It's, we would have to.
But we couldn't just pick a group.
Pick a group to pay. That would not be fair to the public.
What, to mail out letters?
If we were mailing them, we would use the post office, of course.
Yes.
So we, we can't donate directly to a private organization as the town. And if we were going to pay a group, we would have to, I would think, we couldn't just pick one group and anoint them the winner of the bid, so to speak.
Okay, we good on that? Okay, town manager updates.
All the way since last week?
None.
Of course, much of my work over the last week has been, and we did with just last week, has been on the FY 2025 budget and the town meeting warrant. The request for proposals for the climate action plan, which was approved at the, at the last town meeting, will be posted on our website tomorrow. It'll go up on the state website the, the day after that. The cost of the police cruiser has gone up since the first quote, so there's, there's going to be a change to the numbers that we've been expecting for the money articles in town meeting. It went up from about $67,000 to $73,694. The old quote was a year old, and we did the vote, and it went up substantially. Free cash has been certified as of today at $2.44 million. I'm planning to ask the finance committee to consider adding more money to capital and sewer stabilization and to our OPEB fund with the new figures of $300,000 for capital stabilization, $300,000 for sewer stabilization, and $250,000 for the OPEB fund. That should bring the OPEB fund close to 5% above our, our liability. We're aiming for 10% above the liability to provide a cushion for any 10% drop in the stock market. Some people advise a 20% cushion, you know, but that's a lot of town's people's money to tie up. You know, maybe, maybe it'll drop 20% at some point, but maybe it'll make that up too at some point, so that's, that's what I have for you.
Tom, you just accounted for 300,000, 300,000, and 200,000. That's a million. Where's the other billion point four go?
That's 100 and, that's 850,000. The rest of it is, is the money articles in Article 19. And then.
I thought you said 3, 3, and 2.
3, 3, and 250. Yeah, so 850.
Aye.
And then that leaves about $700,000 for either emergencies during the year or to roll over to next year.
You're stating free cash.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom, Mr. Chair, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Did we hear back from the water commissioners yet on the return of the ARPA dollars?
I believe they're meeting Wednesday night.
Yeah, they are, they're having a meeting Wednesday.
And what I was informed was that that was supposed to be on their agenda.
Okay, I'll hold on for a second. I don't, I don't see the return of the ARPA dollars on their agenda. I see the letter, ARPA funds, select approval of letter. I don't know exactly what that means, but we were expecting a update from the water commissioner by the end of this month of the overall status, but need a confirmation we're going to get the return of the dollars?
Still got 6, 8?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
It's not on their, it's not on their agenda as far as return of the ARPA dollars.
But, but a, the select board letter is on, you said? Is that right?
Sure.
It says approval of letter. It doesn't say anything about a letter from the select, what's in letter, ARPA funds, dollars, well, it says letter, ARPA funds, dollars, select vote, and it says approval of letter. I don't know what that means, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to talk about returning the ARPA dollars. So I guess I'm asking you directly if you had a conversation with the water commissioner chair to return those dollars or not.
Yeah, the, the way we left it, he did not see any barriers to returning the extra money, and, and they are continuing to take legal action to try to get the 77,000 back as well.
Do we have any, do we have a representative attended the meeting on our behalf?
I'm sorry?
Do we have anybody attending the meeting on our behalf?
Well, I'm supposed to be at the finance committee meeting.
Do we have anyone from the town adult representing our need to return the ARPA dollars from the water commission at their meeting?
Not that I know of at this point.
Can we assign somebody to be there?
I can try, it's.
Basically, I don't want them to delay it that they have a question and nobody's there to answer the question. We've been waiting for this for too long.
Right. All right, well, I will try to make that happen.
Can we, I don't, it's hard doing this remote, can we make it happen? Like, can we send Sandy or somebody else, or, I don't know?
I can try to make it happen. I'm not sure I can guarantee anything at this point, but yeah.
All set, Joe?
One of the.
Not good for me, but I'll take what I got, so it's fine. This is a critical issue that we get those dollars back so we can apply to other issues and not delay it, because I think it's going to be delayed based upon what I see on the agenda.
Oh, I've been informed the T. Fire District meeting is not Wednesday, it's tomorrow.
Tuesday, I don't know. I'm at an end ball meeting, you're ready to go, but when that starts at 4:00, you can go on that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and in our letter, we asked for the water commissioner to give us an update in the month of March, and we have to get an update beside what's in the, what's in the press, correct?
I'm sorry, I, I was just writing down that I, you know, I believe I'm free tomorrow evening, so we could go.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. All set, Joe?
Yeah, I'm all set, Bob, thank you.
Okay. Any items anticipated, not anticipated, 48 hours before the meeting?
Not me.
Okay. Remarks of the select board?
Only to say.
Not here.
You may have skipped over future agendas.
Oh, future agendas, yes.
Budget season, that's how we think of it.
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Any future ones, Joe?
No, thank you, Bob.
Okay, now the remarks of the select board.
And me.
Good. Okay, sprint us to the announcements. The annual car permits, bag stickers, and recycle only permits are available for purchase at the transfer station or on the town's website. There are numerous committees. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town managers. Dalton Town House Authority has one vacancy on their board. Must be adult resident, please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two four nine three for more information. Is your electricity bill too high? The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents and take advantage of joining with other communities that have a large customer base for negotiation, which has resulted in prices lower than current ever source prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more details or to outer in, visit town's website or call town manager's office. The Dalton Police Department would like to remind residents the winning parking ban, which is still in effect from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, that we no parking allowed on the streets between these days, between the hours of one AM and six AM. The Department of Public Works would like to remind residents to remove basketball hoops in the roadway as well as the ones that hang over the roadway between the dates of November first, twenty twenty-three, and April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The town of Dalton currently has four job opportunities. A part-time COA van driver, DPW administrative assistant, DPW equipment operator, and assistant tax collector. Please visit the town website or contact the town manager's office at four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two oh two, for more information. The next meeting of the select board will take place on Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM at the senior center with an option for remote participation. Since we do not have a quorum here, do we want to move executive session to next?
Yeah, probably.
Do you make a motion to that, Ken?
I don't think, I think we just have to adjourn.
Yeah.
Right, Tom?
Well, yeah, we table it.
We'll just table it, I understand.
The chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Good night, Dalton, thank you.
Thank you.